...at the Lopez Canyon Environmental Center for a day of exhibits and workshops on composting, mulching, and tree recycling.
Gives us a chance to sit down and talk and collaborate with each other of what's the best practices for mulching in the landfill for compost diversion and material.
Here you will find about 30 of the most high-tech compost-making machines in the industry. They will make it, grind it, screen it, and turn it to make the best compost money can buy. Actually, the city of L.A. gives away this compost for free.
It's all free at our giveaway sites. There's 11 different giveaway sites all over the city. And it's for all the residents to pick up. They can load it in bags, shovel it themselves, and with pitchforks or shovels, and pickup truck beds, or however they want to haul it.
The city of L.A., like others around the country, is fast-learning to practice cleaner, greener ways. As landfills fill up, it is turning more and more of its garbage, tree trimmings, manure, and food waste into energy to put back into the earth. This site, the Lopez Canyon Environmental Center, is a former landfill, but compost and mulch now dot the landscape instead of garbage.
So if you took that, instead of putting it in a landfill and you compost it, right? You're putting it back into a solution that goes back into the ground. It makes the soil, basically gives the soil life. Without organic matter in the soil, you wouldn't have any life. You'd have sand, you'd have clay. This material people view as useless is really an untapped resource that needs to go back into the earth where it started from.
And now, the mulch and compost experts will go back to their home turf armed with newer, better ways to turn manure, garbage, and tree trimmings into food for the earth. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information on compost and mulch giveaway sites, visit lacitysan.org. Well, it's not just a community space, it's a work of art designed by one of L.A.'s most iconic architects. But you may not think so, looking at it now. That's why folks in Eagle Rock are on a mission to bring it back to its former glory. Gil Reyes reports.
So it is Charlie. I think we need to start by sandblasting all this building.
I agree.
Jeremy Levine and Charlie Clark love coming here to Eagle Rock Recreation Center with their families, but are saddened by its current state. Cracked and fading walls just part of the problem.
And I'm like, we have to do something about this. We can't just let it go. And so I called my friend Jeremy, and we started talking to the city, talking to Parks and Rec.
The two are negotiating with the city to restore the center to its original look, a sleek, modernist masterpiece built by renowned L.A. architect Richard Neutra in 1953. The pair have sought the advice of Neutra's son and business partner, Dion Neutra.
Of course, I said I'm absolutely willing. I was the project architect on this building originally, and it's like my baby. In my will, I state that after my death, I would like to see a memorial service held in that building.
Neutra says his dad's intention was to blend sunlight, open space, and innovation to create not just a community space, but a signature Neutra artwork, too. He wants these gray columns installed by the city removed, and the old reflective pool restored. The group also wants the return of the original wide windows. The city later blocked them, either partially or totally, to help prevent shattering from vandals.
All of those plywood windows can become glass again. All of those windows that are just gone because people were afraid they'd get smashed can come back, and all the light comes back in the space, and that's the idea.
But what if they get smashed again?
Well, it's a great question. You know, it's a risk we have to take for a great building. Like, if we decide every great building is going to get covered in plywood and bars, then we'll always have this kind of architecture that isn't what it could be.
These school kids from Eagle Rock agree.
It's very cultural and emotional to like the people around. People come to walk their dogs, and it'll be nice to come here and see it remodeled, back to our history.
And the group isn't yet sure exactly how much those refurbishments would cost. However, they do estimate they would run at least half a million dollars as the search for funding sources is set to begin. At the Eagle Rock Recreation Center, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Now, the group is considering a GoFundMe project and is reaching out to conservancy groups to raise money for restoration. Well, over in Hollywood, the Made in Hollywood Honors may not have as much cachet as the Oscars, but they help honor movies that make Tinseltown what it is, the movie capital of the world. Anna Marcos shows us nothing beats a movie made in La La Land.
It's so L.A., and that's just how Tinseltown types want it. The Made in Hollywood Honors Red Carpet Awards help celebrate this year's Oscar-nominated movies filmed right here in L.A.
Honestly, I think the city of Los Angeles should have got a third Oscar nomination because they really were the star of La La Land.
(SINGING) The city of stars, are you shining just for me?
Yep, L.A.'s namesake movie, La La Land, which provided a little dance and musical interlude, takes top honors at this event. It's made in L.A., it boasts a phenomenal 14 Oscar nominations, and it hired thousands of Angelino cast and crew members. The opening freeway scene alone used more than 1,000 actors.
And we really have to thank the city of Los Angeles and Caltrans for working together with us to make that possible. We got to rehearse for a half a day, and then we came back and shot for 48 hours, not straight, but close the freeway, I should say, for 48 hours.
People actually contact me now to talk about film permitting because they saw the freeway scene at the very beginning of La La Land.
Other films that clinched the Made in Hollywood Honors Award, Zootopia and Moana. Both are up for Best Animated Feature Oscars, and both hired between 600 to 800 cast and crew members.
And this is a place where possibilities are endless.
And maybe this award will bring the honorees good luck. Since 2011, five of the honorees have gone on to win Oscars, films like Argo, The Artist, and Frozen.
One of the things that made a difference in the films getting produced in L.A. was California's film tax incentives, which aim at curbing runaway production.
We now not only have so many more producers working, but, as Jane said, people get to go home and sleep in their own beds with their families.
We want to make it easy for people to shoot here, and we're just thrilled to be a part of this.
Tens of thousands of people are engaged with employment, and it's so important for Los Angeles to support the film industry.
The hope for many is that more and more productions come back to their Tinseltown roots and get the "Made in Hollywood" stamp. Hollywood's film industry creates 500,000 jobs here. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
And each summer, the Made in Hollywood Honors also recognizes Emmy-nominated TV productions made in California. Well, local artists are also making a name for themselves as they take part in a politically-themed exhibition, the first from downtown's popular Art Walk since major changes in the White House. Gil Reyes shows us.
This exhibition, Downtown L.A. Art Walk, is largely inspired by President Trump.
A lot of people felt really sad after the election, and you know, they're channeling their emotions through their art.
The exhibition, entitled "We the People," features the works of 17 local artists. Race and immigration are common themes. Artist Ryan Fisher's work depicts Olympian sprinter Tommy Smith, Smith giving a black power salute the year he won the gold. Also that same year, the Civil Rights Act became law.
That was 1968, and a lot of that stuff is still being felt today, and maybe not even been solved a little bit. So I think it's, it just kind of makes you remember that, yeah, we can call it a triumph, you know, that we kind of eradicated all the racism and stuff like that, but maybe we didn't.
Artist Nisha Chah says she was inspired by recent demonstrations led by women and people of color, many of whom felt insulted by the president's speeches.
And they have their kids on top of their shoulders, too. And they're really innocent kids, like they don't know anything, and they're just smiling as I try to put frustration and pain in their eyebrows and in their faces.
I think satire is a good thing because we all need humor. So, you know, if we can make fun of what's going on in a clever way, I think that we can make a change.
Art Walk holds one event every month with a different theme.
Art Walk has been around for 12 years, and one of the things we have always prided ourselves in is diversity. It's one of the things that Art Walk is well-known for. We have a lot of emerging artists, as well as well-known artists who are very effective when it comes to political expression.
At a time when they have a lot on their minds. From Downtown L.A. Art Walk, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Artwork is held in downtown Los Angeles on the second Thursday of every month. While it was a day spent pounding the pavement to honor fallen heroes, as the second annual Run to Remember Marathon took off, Anna Marcos takes us to the racecourse.
They take off in several waves. And it's off to the races as the Run to Remember Marathon hits the streets. The marathon honors law officers and first responders who have died in the line of duty.
I think this is a time in our history when it's important to recognize the sacrifices of cops and firefighters, and to remember that they're your neighbors, and they're your friends, and they're the best of us.
This missing man formation by flying choppers also pays tribute, as do the flag wearers and flag waivers of all stripes.
Today's special, we've lost some in Eaglewood. I know every city has fallen officers, so we're here to support them.
Every morning, when a police officer or firefighter leaves their home, leaves their wife and their children behind, they never know if they're coming home that day.
All told, more than 5,000 are helping raise money for a good cause with this event. Among them, close to 1,000 LAPD officers, more than 400 sheriff's deputies, kids' youth groups, firefighters, park rangers, even cops from as far away as New York.
Of any department, of any badge, really, truly appreciate everybody putting their life on the line to protect us.
And regular citizens are running for personal reasons as well.
This is our second run together, and we're just running for, you know, our mothers. They both had cancer, and you know, it's special for us because we're running for them.
But many here know that the medal that symbolizes the end of their race also honors the end of watch for those who died in the line of fire. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Runners ran either the half marathon or the full 10K in the event. While the community gathers to mark African-American Heritage Month, a busy intersection in Glatzel Park just got safer, and a group of young people urged the city to put some resources into their future. All these stories in City B. Community members, city officials, and people of all faiths gathered at the AME Church recently for a worship service to commemorate African-American Heritage Month.
We've set aside this month to commemorate all the achievements of the many, many, many black people throughout history, from slavery to 2017.
As part of the celebration, civil rights activist Dorothy Height was also honored after being named the 40th U.S. postage stamp in the Black Heritage Forever Series.
Dorothy Height's a civil rights icon in America, and it's huge not only to celebrate her life, but she's a historical figure, and we can relive her history through this stamp.
Community members, Council District 13 recently dedicated a street overhaul on Fletcher Drive at Estara Street, adjacent to Irving Middle School in Glatzel Park. The improvements include sidewalk rehabilitation, new bike lanes, a new turn lane, and the planting of 140 trees along the street.
The project here just improves the safety for all users of Fletcher Drive, whether you're a cyclist, whether you're in a vehicle, or whether you're a pedestrian.
The L.A. for Youth campaign gathered at City Hall, holding a sign that read "Love the Youth." The group is calling on city officials to create a youth development department, which would include youth centers, community intervention workers, and help in finding jobs. Members of the campaign shared personal stories and delivered to the Los Angeles City Council a copy of a motion requesting for the department's creation. Well, it's a place to enjoy mouth-watering fusion of ancient native recipes mixed with more modern dishes south of the border. A new restaurant opens its doors near downtown L.A., and Anna Marcos takes us there.
El Pueblo de Alvera has a new restaurant on the block. Step into the chihuacle, and you travel to southern Mexico. Wait, hold on, what was that? Chihuacle?
Chihuacle is a Oaxacan pepper. We make a very special mole with that pepper, chihuacle. This pepper is very special and unique. It starts as a yellow pepper, then red pepper, and then black pepper. So like that pepper, our restaurant is very unique.
And that's not all. The restaurant serves ancestral recipes and flavors from Yucatan, Michoacan, Puebla, and Oaxaca. We already know they serve plenty of mole. These four types look pretty good. We also know about enchiladas, but there's a whole lot of other stuff we can't even pronounce. How about some green rice or something? And then there's the nopal tilla.
You will find our nopal tillas ancestrales. That is something new that we have not seen here in Los Angeles. It is a two-tone tortilla, half nopal, half non-giama corn.
The restaurant owner wants to combine food, art, and culture, and wants you to enjoy it all.
It's a place where you can come to savor the food, enjoy the conversations, talk about your day, put your cellphones down, look at the art, listen to the music.
Chihuacle will form one of the cornerstones of a brand-new development in El Pueblo that will feature churches, museums, restaurants, shops, and much more, along with pedestrian-friendly walking streets.
We're really joining the leagues of every other large city in celebration of our roots, of where we began with the Pobladores.
So chomp down on a piece of history and enjoy those ancestral flavors. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Chihuacle Restaurant is located at 103 Paso de la Plaza in El Pueblo. Well, lace up your running shoes for a good cause, get up close and personal with all your favorite Harry Potter memorabilia, and get your heart racing with some exciting action on the ice. All this and this week's things to do. Team Fox is heading to Griffith Park for the first annual Los Angeles Foxtrot 5K for Parkinson's Research. Team Fox is the grassroots fundraising arm of the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research. Each year, more than 1,500 Team Fox members worldwide turn their passions and interests into unique fundraising events and athletic feats. Since its inception in 2006, members have raised $15 million for Parkinson's Research, helping the organization achieve its mission to speed new treatments and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's disease. Come out and join Team Fox at Griffith Park and run toward a cure on Sunday, March 5. A new Harry Potter collection illuminates the Hollywood Museum. The museum's new collection of Sorcery includes acquisitions from the Harry Potter film franchise, considered among the highest-grossing films of all time. Spotlighted are new items from noted Harry Potter historian Christopher Knoll, the ultimate broom used by Harry Potter in The Sorcerer's Stone, and a squill and ink bottle used while at Hogwarts School of Witchcraft and Wizardry enhanced the exhibit. Other items also on exhibit are Harry's robe, costumes, signed blueprints of rooms at Hogwarts School, photos, posters, and more. Check it all out at the Hollywood Museum. For more, visit thehollywoodmuseum.com.
And he got checked from behind by Trevor Lewis.
The Los Angeles Kings hit the ice as they face off with the Vancouver Canucks. Check out the fast-paced, heart-pounding action on the ice, root for your favorite players, and get fired up for another season of hard-hitting hockey. The L.A. Kings take on our friendly northern neighbors for the ultimate rivalry. Don't miss it at the Staples Center on March 4 at 7:00 p.m. For more, visit NHL.com/Kings. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
311, your one call to City Hall.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, everyone. It is Wednesday, March 1st. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall, to this council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonnabusqueino Sidhu, Englander Harris Dawson, Weisar Caress, Krikorian Martinez, Ofero Price, Rue Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonnabusqueino moves, and Mr. Ofero seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to reduce the lien amount for Item 1B to $2,538.76 to reflect receipt of partial payment, to receive and file Items 1E, G, P, and T inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full, and to continue Item 1F to March 24, 2017, and I'm told 1L as well, to March 24.
Okay, so without objection, that shall be the order? Continue.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Then let's hold those items and move on?
That brings us to Items 4 through 11. They're items which public hearings have been held. For Item 11, a Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee Report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, so, members 4 through 11 specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Items 12 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Well, you struggled a bit, but you got that out. So, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Okay, let's continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to Item 24. It's an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Well, first I'm going to look over to Mr. Krikorian. Why don't we, for now, let's hold it on the desk? And continue.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 24, the closed session matter, has been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. It actually will result in the city receiving funds, and so we would recommend an eye vote. That can be done in open session unless members have questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, why don't you read that item?
Item 24, relative to a dispute between the City of Los Angeles and Ventiv Technology Incorporated, formerly Aon E Solutions Incorporated, there is a recommendation to accept $500,000 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy? We're going to take Sean Murphy. Why don't we call you up? And Mr. Murphy? Okay, Mr. Murphy, your items 1, 2, and 3, I'm told, in general public comment. Yes, sir?
Item number 1, I support it. Item number 2, so-so. Item number 3, we should consider this item. It's a good item. Okay. General public comment?
Mr. Clerk, could you give him his... Yeah, go right ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, general public comment. Linda Hope was here. I know her personally. I hope they don't make that neighborhood ugly. I wish it could have been a better vote. That's it. And I'm going to get my ashes later on at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I can have Bob Isel and Tammy Rosoto come forward? General public comment? And is there Mario? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Robert Isley, and I'm the Vice President of the La Brea Hancock Homeowners Association, and I just wanted to speak in affirmation of the baseline mansionization ordinance, and hoping that you enacted today along with the...
Okay, we're in general public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I filled it out wrong then. Can I come back later if you hear comments?
I don't know what we're going to do with that, but you're welcome to stay, and we'll get... When we get to that item, we'll figure out how we're going to proceed.
Thank you very much.
So, Tammy, is it the same thing with you? Okay, why don't you wait? You may want to, Tammy and Bob, go to the kiosk in the back, fill out cards for the items that pertain to that. And so now we'll go with... Let's go with Mr. Previn, Eric Previn. And if I could see the cards that Eric Previn... Okay, Mr. Previn, you have 1A. You have 1C, 1D, 1G, 1I, 1J, 12, 20, and 22. And 19, and 19. Yes, sir?
Okay, thank you, sir. That's a lot there, but don't worry, I've got it. Item number 1, sir, is your... It's Eric Previn, by the way, from CD2, and I am running for the Office of Mayor of Los Angeles. Item number 1 is your typical lien item, and we have some impressive numbers today. Mr. Caress, who is running for office in CD5, has come out of nowhere and put four pernicious liens on his constituents. It's impressive in a very nice neighborhood to go that far, but I think he feels bad that he has not been participating during the campaign. CD9, you have the great Curran Price is also posting a good 4, and everybody else is below that. But it's worth noting that Martinez has done six pernicious liens. I believe Mr. Harris Dawson has got six, which is impressive because the 8th District is the poorest of all the districts. It is a stately amount of pernicious leaning against the constituents, so congratulations, sir. And you, once again, only one, and then one for CD7, where you are not really filling the vacated seat, but you are acting as if you are. Item number 22, sir, is Celebrity Realty Holdings LLC. This is Curran Price, and I believe he's working closely with another council member on this one. These are Honda of Downtown, and we have bent over backward so far that the backs of our heads are nearly touching the floor to accommodate with public benefit... We're going to get a lot of benefit from these guys rolling out an expanded car dealership right on exposition downtown. I don't know if, in fact, that's really in our interest, given that our main focus is getting cars off the road and easing congestion and creating affordable housing. So, by giving this land to a car dealer, it's kind of cynical. Why weren't we putting in some kind of an affordable or service, community service-like center? Is a very good question. Are they great guys who deserve this kind of special treatment and all sorts of freebies? We could decide for ourselves individually. I don't... I'm not sure. Item number 12 is the great Dr. Alice Horn is being added to the Commission on Women. There are six women serving, which is appropriate. What caught me by surprise was that there are five women serving on the five-person Ethics Commission, which is very strange, because Mayor Garcetti had an opportunity to at least put one kind of Y chromosome in the mix, but we didn't go in that direction. Item 24, sir, here you have Krikorian settling that fancy lawsuit against Aon, currently Ventiv Technology. Sir, $500,000 needs to be contextualized. If they're giving us $500,000, who knows how much they made off with? Is what the ordinary Angelino wants to know. And I think that that is something that we should get an answer to. Item 19 and 20, on a day when I know you're trying to create a no-on-S feeling, when people all over LA are talking about yes-on-S, you've got two items where the city is inarguably altering the dedication for the good. Because you have a triangle in the middle of not West LA, and it's hard to get to, so it's fenced off. There used to be some drugs going on there. Now we're going to be able to access the place, but you should close down this little street and make it so that people can get there safely. Because otherwise, once again, I don't want to provoke Bloomingfield about Vision Zero. We are simply saying we want to save lives, but we're not going to be doing it effectively. So, let's move forward on that.
Okay, thank you. If we can give him, Mr. Clerk, his one minute for general public comment? Yes, sir?
Sure. It's Eric Previn, and as I said, I'm running for the Office of Mayor of Los Angeles. And I want Angelinos to know that there is a choice. There is a feeling that Mayor Garcetti has a lot of support, and, you know, it's going to be a dismal turnout, they're predicting. But you should know, and CityWatchLA has posted links to all the candidates, you can go to citywatchla.com, and you can check it out for yourself and decide what you think. But if you don't want to vote for Mayor Garcetti, for whatever reason, I would ask for your vote. Because in a way, as a government watchdog who comes down to talk to you all about what's on the agenda, I'm the opposition, and I think voters would like to see some change down here. So, thank you for your help.
Thank you. I'd now like to... Alan, your clock is going the other way. I'd like to recognize Mr. Busqueino for a special intro. Mr. Busqueino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce to you the first woman to lead our California League of Cities, Carolyn Coleman, our Executive Director of the California League of Cities. Give her a round of applause, our first visit here. Carolyn comes from the National League of Cities and was leading the federal advocacy team with National League of Cities, and it's just been a blessing to us upon her arrival to California League of Cities in the last couple, few months now, right? So, we're continuing to focus on our relationship with cities across the state, up and down. I know a number of our colleagues sit on committees with both California League of Cities and National League of Cities. As you know, we're focusing on working together from cities up and down the state on economic development, transportation, housing issues, public safety issues. So, Carolyn, one minute to say a few words.
Well, I will be brief, and to Council President, and to my friend Joe, thank you for welcoming me here to Los Angeles and to California. I look forward to continuing the strong partnership between the city and the League of California Cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And we look forward to meeting and working with you as well. Mr. Busqueino, are you ready to move forward with your presentation? If so, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, if I can, I'll defer to Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Mitch Englander, to kick it off.
All right. Thank you very much, colleagues. You know, often, we bring up our first responders, our true heroes, our firefighters, our police officers. But these are the true heroes in the city of Los Angeles. My Safe LA are the ones that aren't rushing into buildings that are on fire, because they're the ones to make sure those fires don't happen in the first place. They're the ones to make sure that the preventative measures, that the people and the citizens and the residents and the businesses in Los Angeles are protected, are trained, are ready to respond, not only in surviving earthquakes, but how to perform CPR, for example. The importance of having a family escape plan, water safety, burn prevention, smoke alarm installation, where we often, and too often unfortunately, see what happens when people have faulty smoke alarms. In fact, it was Marquise Harris Dawson, just this week, was honoring firefighters, who on January 17th heroically walked in to save four children's lives. And unfortunately, all four were burned severely, but fortunately, they lived. Those perhaps, perhaps those kinds of incidents can be prevented because of the work that My Safe LA is doing each and every day. We experienced a 6.7 magnitude earthquake in my district. In fact, it's often been said, Mr. Wesson, that I represent the epicenter of disaster. So, with what often happens in not only the San Fernando Valley, but the Northwest Valley from earthquakes and fires, floods, mudslides, train accidents, you name it, these are the ones that are really running towards danger, is the brave men and women behind me who are out there working to prevent injuries. In fact, we had Lucy Jones in here from the U.S. Geological Survey, the "Earthquake Queen," as she's been called many times, and in here saying and telling all of us that it wasn't earthquakes that were causing deaths and injuries. It was what happens afterwards. It was knowing all those tools and tips and preventative measures to make sure that you have, for example, a pair of shoes next to the bed after an earthquake, because the first thing that you do is get up in the morning, in the middle of the night, and you run to go check on your loved ones. You step on all this glass, and now you are a victim. You need to be rescued. You can't get out of the house. Or a lamp falls over, and you don't realize, well, the electricity's off, why pick up the lamp? Why go outside and shut off the electricity? Because when it turns back on, that broken lamp can now become a fire. And those are the things, the tools and the tips, that My Safe LA is out there teaching every day. And so, that we recognize them today. These are the true heroes. These are the millions of lives that have already been saved, that will continuously be saved because of their work. The trainers training the trainers. And so, I want to recognize them. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Joe Busqueino, in bringing them here today before all of us and saying thank you very much. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's important to work alongside a number of our volunteers who are our angels in this great city. They help safeguard our schools, our recreation and parks facilities, older adult living facilities, and large apartment complexes. But something that is very important, as Mr. Englander mentioned, the importance of changing out your smoke detectors. Many homes in the city of LA are not properly equipped with working smoke detectors that are up to date as well. Many residents don't have a working smoke detector or carbon monoxide detector in their homes at all. Many families that have alarms haven't even checked to ensure that their detectors work. Checking your smoke alarm and carbon monoxide detector each year should be as routine as putting on your seatbelt, because failure to do so can have deadly and tragic consequences. And this Christmas, my district unfortunately lost two little twin boys to a deadly house fire. And the very next day, My Safe LA, individuals before you today, they were out in full force providing free smoke detectors to residents. My Safe LA has installed nearly 10,000 smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in thousands of homes throughout our city. They've distributed over 5,000 free smoke alarms to residents at no charge. And during the month of March this year, My Safe LA will stage four smoke alarm canvassing and education operations in each of the four geographic LA Fire Department Operation bureaus, Central, West, South, and Valley, which include a community event organized by the Fire Department and the local city council office to reach as many residents as possible. Their work is extraordinary, important in preventing potential health problems and even loss of life. Your smoke detectors should be tested at least twice a year, and we recommend...
Your smoke detectors should be tested at least twice a year, and we recommend replacing the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when daylight savings comes as an easy reminder, and I believe that's what, next week?
That's correct.
That's next week. So 10 days out. Daylight savings time is around the corner, and that's mark your calendars for Sunday, March 12th. So be proactive and change your detectors' batteries this month and every time you set the clock forward or back. LA Fire Department, South Bureau, and My Safe LA will be kicking off the Smoke Alarm Awareness Month in a series of community events, the first of which will be held in my hometown of San Pedro with Fire Station 48. They'll be canvassing the neighborhood, install smoke alarms, and educate people on fire safety. Colleagues, help me welcome an individual who's helped lead the charge, and we'll talk more about My Safe LA and also provide a short video. Todd Leitz to say a few words on behalf of My Safe LA. Welcome, Todd.
Thanks, buddy. Thank you, Councilmember Buscayeno, Councilmember Englander. Council President Wesson, good morning, Councilmembers. So nice to be back here in front of the horseshoe. We're very honored to be here today to speak before you. Thank you so much for considering our initiative to declare the month of March Smoke Alarm Awareness Month. We've got a lot of plans for it, and we'd love to collaborate with your council districts to reach out into the homes of your constituents to improve their public safety. We're going to share why we're working so closely in the community to promote public safety, and we're very pleased to collaborate with so many different agencies, like the Emergency Management Department, the Los Angeles Unified School District, the LA Department of Aging, American Red Cross, Children's Hospital Los Angeles, FEMA, the Federal Vision 2020 Program, Motorola, and of course, the Los Angeles Fire Department, who are our partners in safety. We're very pleased that our organization continues to engage in all 15 council districts throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to working more closely with you as time goes on. So I'd like to run a short video that highlights what we've been doing to engage the community all over the city of Los Angeles. So, guys, run it.
Cue it.
Nice. have. But first, I'd like our executive officer to come up and share a bit more about our mission and the importance of community engagement. David Barrett's our executive officer, he's one of the founders of My Safe LA.
Right. Good work, David. Council President, Councilmembers, thank you very much for having us here today. The video shows some of the engagement, some of the output, but I think I'd like to just spend perhaps a minute or two talking about what we're really looking for, which is outcome. Some of you may have heard the term "community risk reduction." It's a term that is often misunderstood, because people think it's a thing or a service, and it's not. It doesn't live in a box, it doesn't live in a, in a office building, it doesn't live in any place, it's a process. And that process is an ongoing, expanding thing, and one of the reasons we're so pleased to be here today is that you, the 15 of you, are part of that process. What we're doing is part of that process. And to define that a little bit more, smoke alarms don't prevent structure fires. CPR does not prevent sudden cardiac arrest. But when we teach high school students not only how to perform CPR, but how to use an AED, how to work as a team, when we teach them how to communicate with 911, that's when survivability goes up, if provided rapidly. That's when, if they use pulse point and become a civilian responder, that's what community risk reduction is about. It is not it. In fact, I personally think that the term should probably go away. It's, we are engaging the community. I speak about CRR all across the country. Yesterday and the day before, I brought Jim Crawford, who was the man who originated community risk reduction, and we toured Los Angeles, meeting the firefighters and other people in the community, so that we could talk more about engagement. And what we want to do is work diligently to make sure that we're helping to engage our people. And all of our people that are uniformed have EMS training. Every year, we take our top two performers and we give them a full ride to paramedic school. Brian Vardany and Christopher Kerberat are our two paramedics that have just graduated, and one of them is already in the employment. One of them is hopefully on the verge of being employed by the Los Angeles Fire Department. And if we can, if we can provide them with more paramedics, if we can provide them with the resources to do things that they don't do on the front line, it's going to be a big benefit to the community. The last thing I want to share is that we tailor our work to each community. And one of the things that should concern all of us right now, immigrants are starting to avoid answering their door for anyone. Immigrants are starting to be concerned that free smoke alarms is a ruse to turn them over to federal agents for deportation. So we're working to make sure that each one of our steps is aimed at building trust, building collaboration. And behind me, you see some of the senior officers within the Los Angeles Fire Department. I am grateful for them standing with us today. We are there to support them and to support the community, and we hope that as the year proceeds, we'll see more of you, and you'll see more of us. Thank you very much.
Eric, thank David. And Captain Castro to also say a few words, please, as well.
Counsel, it is a great honor to be able to stand here alongside a very critical element in public safety, and that's our partnership with My Safe LA. While having oversight of the emergency operations of the LAFD, I know all too well how the efforts of the rank-and-file LAFD members save lives every single day. And I do want to comment a little bit on how our partnership with My Safe LA equally results in saved lives. It may not be quite as tangible as a firefighter carrying a victim out of a burning building, like we talked about in the presentation yesterday, but it is every bit the positive effect on public safety. Their efforts in conjunction and the collective efforts of My Safe LA, and with the elected element of this city that supports the efforts of My Safe LA, results in every bit the amount of tangible life-saving that we see on a daily basis. So congratulations very much to My Safe LA, and thank you for the continued support of the council.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, Mr.
I do want to rec, yes, sir.
I do have a member that would like to say something. Would it work now, or do you want me?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
So then what I'd like to do at this point in time is recognize Mr. Mitchell O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so glad, Joe and Mitchell, that you brought My Safe LA here to be recognized, because it gives me a chance to thank them publicly, collaborating with the Fire Department and my office. We've done so many community walks and community events in the 13th District. Because of your work and the collaboration with the LAFD, you have made the residents in my district safer. You've provided greater safety across the 13th District, and I look so forward to continuing this relationship and moving this awareness forward, because, like you said, you can't necessarily quantify it, but it literally is a matter of life and death. And you're, you're providing such a great service to Angelinos, so I want to stand up and publicly thank you for this incredible service you're providing all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Back to you, Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to recognize Harry Sumerjian, who is the head of the Government Affairs for My Safe LA, for helping organize this great presentation in partnership with my office, Mr. Englander's office, and Nicole Deering, who was our point in Council District 15. Thank you, Nicole, working with Harry, it's a great tag-team effort. We also have John Jones III from Watts, California, who's led a teen CERT program and has been nationally recognized by the White House Administration. So thank you, JJ, for being here, we love you. So on behalf of Mr. Englander and I, the entire city council, we want to recognize My Safe LA for their dedicated service to our city and the people that we serve. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. We'll meet you all in the back. Ladies and gentlemen, please collect all your belongings, you'll be exiting the back. I think, I think Joe was supposed to have cookies on top, but I don't know. Did you come through? Cannolis?
Thank you, thank you all for your service. I do want to take a moment, we have a special guest with us today. Corrine Hoades, the President of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council. Let's give Corrine a round of applause. Thank you for coming down. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
And, Mr. President, there has been a request from a member to continue item 20, excuse me, continue item 2 to April 21st.
Okay, without objection. Okay, so now, Mr. Walsh has items 1A, 1B, 3, 12, 14, 15, 16, 21, 22, 23, and, yeah, and general public comment. So, Mr. Walsh, the floor is yours.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number one is building is safety. You do an excellent job. I've been living here since 1976. I have no complaints. Okay, to hear that from a white guy is unusual. Number two, this is, number two is this vacation of right-of-way, these things are usually done for the benefit of developers, and they pay in campaign contributions. Number three, you're already setting up for the recounts. Do you know something that, that we don't know? Amounts of fees and bonds for recounts? I know you're a quarter of a billion dollars in debt, so I guess you got to set these things up. Number 12, this is property, a public hearing, an opportunity for public comment, this is gang reduction. There are two gangs in the city. They signed a peace treaty about 12 years ago. That's when the crime went down. The crime went down because the Crips and the Bloods signed a peace treaty. It wasn't because of the cops. And everybody knows that. And the Times won't even print their name. John Gotti went to prison because of publicity. That's why he went to prison. But you protect the Crips and the Bloods and the Times, and none of you will mention their name. That's why the gangs are where they are. Number 13, Haime Saban and John Goodman, these are Elvis Duran, these are stars on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. We're in favor of the, of this, but the Walk of Fame is dreadful. It's torn apart, it's ugly, it needs millions of dollars of rehabilitation. And 17, rent reduction, numbered, okay, park playground, we're all in favor of that. We're in favor of a lot of things that you do. Hearing, public hearing for the development agreement, any kind of development agreement, the city council person in charge sits in and makes sure that the developer gets what they want. That's why they're putting millions of dollars to developer in to measure us. Not to help black renters. Do you think these people in Australia are spending millions to help black renters? They don't give a damn about you. Okay, that's my minute. Yes?
Okay, can we give him, hold tight, Mr. Walsh, give him his one minute for general public comment. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes on, see, they're nice to me now, because they're afraid. If they're nasty to me, you'll vote yes-on-S. That's the fear, especially, and I, again, I have said, and I'm still waiting for one black person in this county to say to John Walsh, you're full of shit, John Walsh, there are dozens and hundreds of black people in hard hats working on construction. Not one person, not one person has found a black person with a hard hat. Carpenters are the most racist of all of the unions. And as far as women are concerned, that's the problem, no women in hard hats. Show me them, show me them. And they're asking you to vote no, so the jobs can go to Hispanics and white people. This color.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, now I want to call up Daniel Gus, if I could get his items. Is this them?
It's all of them. All right, good morning.
Hold on one second, Mr. Gus. One.
All of them.
Okay, 3, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21.
Also known as all of them.
22. Okay, go ahead.
All right, good stuff. We are going to have some interesting comments today, Councilmembers. We're going to have some really revealing crap today. Just wait till general public comment, just wait. First, item number one, it's interesting, first of all, that Mr. Price is not here, but let's look at item number one. The LA Times wrote an article about Mr. O'Farrell, and how he's being challenged, and how he might lose his job, but on item number one, a week, actually, less than a week before the primary, there are no liens in Council District 13. How can that be, all of a sudden? After the LA Times says Mr. O'Farrell is in trouble for his relationship with developers, all of a sudden, item one has no liens? How can that be? You look at any other agenda, it's chock-full of liens. But right after the LA Times says, watch out for Mr. O'Farrell, he could lose his job, community activists are running against him, all of a sudden, there are no liens on item one for CD 13. Very telling, voters, very telling viewers. Item number 17, I want to give you a compliment. I guess this is Mr. Ruze's district. It looks like there was a rent, rent reduction, and certain things that had to happen by landlords in order for the rent reduction to be reduced, and it looks like that was done, and the rent reduction was removed, that's what this item is. So there's a compliment. Effective government, the bread and butter, the boring stuff. Item number 18, it's about a loan for Crenshaw Villa's senior housing. This is Mr. Wesson's district. That's good. If you're helping seniors, if you're helping poor people, that's good. So let me be on record that I paid Mr. Wesson a compliment today, or at least as I read this item. Okay? So I'm going to give you your time back, I'm going to go on to general comment.
Let's go to general public comment, give him his minute. Yes, sir.
Councilmembers, I have the number one most-read article on CityWatch this morning, again, about the appearance, according to court- So, let me be on record that I paid Mr. Wesson a compliment today, or at least as I read this item. Okay? So, I'm going to give you your time back. I'm going to go on to general comment—
Let's go to general public comment. Give him his minute. Yes, sir.
Council members, I have the number-one most-read article on City Watch this morning, again, about the appearance, according to court records, that Mr. Price has been married to two women simultaneously. There was an article in The Sentinel yesterday, without accrediting the writer, in which it said it was false. Council members, I stand by the accusation that Mr. Price not only was apparently, according to court records, married to two women, but it appears that Mr. Price is presently married to two women, according to the LA County Court System. Mr. Price is apparently presently married to two different women. And here's a 2013 article talking about his wife's 2009 diagnosis. Well, he didn't try to get divorced from his second wife until 2011. You tell me how that happens. You tell me. I stand by—
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's do—if you could pull up Mr. Herman on the screen, please. Okay, Mr. Herman, you have Items 1, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. Go ahead.
Now that we're on the liens, isn't it obvious that City Watch has proven that we can alter our liens? We can fix our liens if we communicate effectively. How do we do that? We come here and we represent ourselves and said, "Where is the registered mail receipt?" Well, I have three in my hand, Mr. Price. Three so far, registered receipts like these. They don't rain, but they pour. You have to send them to your homes, such as in CD 9, 326 West Gage Avenue. A $3,000 lien. What about at 7700 South Avalon Boulevard? Another $3,000 lien. Page after page of liens, unconstitutional liens, brought to your homes, to your families, to make you feel this small. Thank you, by the way, Daniel Gus, for the articles regarding CD 9, because now the truth is out about O'Farrell and Price.
Mr. President—
Stay on that subject.
I'm going to items in the back of the page, Rocky. Give me some time.
And the speaker is still off-topic.
I'm going to Item 18.
No, Mr. Herman, get on topic, please.
Oh, Mr. Chair—
No, Mr. Herman, do you want to forfeit your time? Get on topic. We're not going to go back and forth.
Motion, Wesson and Vic Hears, Englander, relative to a fucking loan of AB 1290 funds or bonds for the fucking Crenshaw Villa senior housing. Since when do we see development ever so poor in our city of Los Angeles? And let me finish directly from the recommendations of Consum. To wreck the fucking Los Angeles Housing and Community Interest Department to provide loan documents into the Crenshaw Villa? Bullshit. For loans at AB 1290, funds if any, amount to fucking $500,000 for the fucking benefit of Crenshaw Villa? Who the fuck would ever think you can get a loan to live in Los Angeles, other than Wesson? Again, the perjury says—or perjure. A 50-inch—
All right, let's go to his general public comment. He's off-topic. Give him his minute. Come on, Mr. Herman, go ahead.
Now that I'm being distracted by the women of City Hall, why do they have to wear tight clothing and distract my mind from concentration? Shut up, rookie. I'm not done.
No, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Stop his time. Mr. City Attorney, he can only talk about things that we have business. We don't have business about that.
Mr. Herman is not talking about anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of this city. He is off-topic.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you've been warned twice. Sergeant, show him to the outside of the chambers.
And he is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
Okay, he's continuing to disrupt. Let's get Mr. Herman and leave immediately. He's continuing to disrupt. Okay, while he is leaving, let's prepare to vote on Items 3. He's continuing, Mr. City Attorney.
He is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
No, Sergeant, help him. He's not leaving fast enough. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting this meeting. Please exit.
And just for the record, in case cameras aren't picking this up, Mr. Herman is walking backwards as slowly as he can, obviously trying to delay the meeting. He's still shouting as he leaves.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is. Okay, now we're going to prepare to vote on Items 3, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 22, and 23. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Buscagno, it's my understanding you have an introduction?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We have here in our council chambers our Watts Youth Council. Give them a round of applause.
All right, welcome, guys.
Really appreciate your leadership. So, Mr. President, our Watts District Office, under the direction of Axel Palacios and John Jones, put together this—the first-ever Watts Youth Council. Seventeen dedicated students from Jordan High School, under the direction of Dr. Marine and Mrs. Moore, our partners at Jordan Green Dot for selecting this amazing group of our young leaders. All—we welcome you. We love you. We want the best for you. And you experience on how not to—how not to handle yourself in a public meeting. So, this is definitely a lesson learned, but we welcome you and looking forward to engaging and communicating and working alongside. Mr. President, I'm going to meet with them after council today, and we're going to share some ideas. You know, when teenagers speak, people listen. And these are our teens, our young leaders. I really welcome you and appreciate you taking on this leadership role. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you and welcome. Let's vote on Item 1. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, then, Item 19. I think I have some cards. I do. Mr. Handel and Christine Loner.
Good morning, Council. My name is Jay Handel. I'm here as an individual stakeholder of West Los Angeles. I served as the Neighborhood Council Chair when we adopted a blanket policy against widening and dedications that facilitate possible future widening. It was felt that such requirements facilitated drive-through traffic along our major streets while discouraging pedestrians and PODs. The modified conditions help pedestrians and bicyclists with a wider sidewalk and will prevent Santa Monica Boulevard from becoming more of a freeway in the future. I urge your support on this matter. Thank you.
You know what, Mr. Handel? Before you leave, I noticed you have a card, I believe, on 20 as well. Why don't you speak to that?
Sure. Thank you. Again, Jay Handel, I'm here speaking as an individual stakeholder from West Los Angeles. I served as Neighborhood Council Chair during parts of Bill Rosendahl and Mike Bonin's term. I also serve currently on the Police Advisory Board. I saw firsthand the public safety challenges that the triangle presented in the past. It is a problem that has vexed council members Browdy, Mieszkowski, Rosendahl, and Bonin all. I feel that so many calls from stakeholders about blight at the triangle as you enter West LA. It's been an embarrassment for our city and a blight in West LA. Now with our new Senior Lead Officer, Jimmy Levinson, and new community nonprofit, we are on the path to fixing the triangle in a way that revitalizes the gateway to West LA while restoring public access and maintaining public safety. I think if you vote today—a yes vote—you will feel the smiles of both Bill Rosendahl and Marvin Browdy looking down on this body.
Thank you. Thank you. So, if I can have—is it Mr. Loner or Lanner?
Yes, Kristen Lanner, my wife, stepped out for a second. So, Jonathan Lanner—
Okay, well, we will go right ahead.
Thank you, council members, for taking up this motion. We believe that the motion in front of you increases the pedestrian activation of this intersection and this corner specifically. It provides a much-needed amenity for walkers and bikers alike, and we share the sentiments of Mr. Handel and urge your support of Item Number 19.
Okay, you want to go on and speak on 20 as well?
Of course. Again, Jonathan Lanner for Kristen Lanner. Item Number 19 is a long overdue improvement to the Triangle Park. I know that my wife, Kristen, as a former council staffer, has worked with the community on this park for a very long time, and we are happy and enthusiastic about the support of this item by the council office. We look forward to continuing our work with the community and making this park a real gem for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bonin, I am so sorry.
That's okay, Mr. President. Thank you. Just wanted to rise and thank Mr. Handel and Mr. Lanner for being here to testify today. One of the policy imperatives of this council has been implementation of Vision Zero, which is supposed to make our streets safer, get us to zero traffic fatalities by 2025. We want it reduced by 20% this year. And one of the ways that we can do that is actually making the city more pedestrian-friendly. And here is an example of an old outdated policy which calls for folks who are improving properties to widen the street. That adds more automobile capacity. It narrows our sidewalks, makes things harder for pedestrians, makes the neighborhood less livable. In this case, the Neighborhood Council came to me and said, "We don't want them to widen the street. We want wider sidewalks." So, I want to thank the applicant for agreeing to do this. It's a good thing, and I'm also very glad to finally see progress made in returning Bundy Triangle into public use, which will help activate that space and also improve the neighborhood. So, and I vote is recommended on both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, to clarify, we'll be voting on Items 19 and 20. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, is Item 18 prepared for us to vote on?
Yes, sir. And, Mr. President, 18A has been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Mr. City Attorney?
And just for the record, it's a technical, non-substantive amendment.
Okay. So, we will vote on this as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, why don't we recess the regular and go into the special?
Very good, sir. Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscagno, Sadio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carras, Correia, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present. That brings us to Items 25 through 27. They're items for which public hearings have been held. And, Mr. President, amending motion 25 and 26A has been submitted, posted, and circulated.
Okay, so, there's been a request to reopen comment. So, what I'm going to do is reopen public comment for one minute each for 15 minutes. Mr. Weezer, it's my understanding we have some technical things we have to do first.
Item 25 and 26, Mr. President. We're on those items, right? Okay, there we are. It's on the board. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We've circulated some amending motions. What this—the motion does is that 25A and 26A actually consolidates both the baseline mansionization and hillside ordinances and the R1 variation zones. Both of these have been discussed and plumb for some time, and we first adopted the baseline mansionization and hillside ordinances, but as we discovered with R1 variation zones at the request of the Planning Department and City Attorney's Office, we realized we needed to consolidate those. And as many of you know, this dates back to 2014, when the Planning Department submitted a neighborhood conservation report that detailed a plan to address these issues of neighborhood character. What we're doing today is going to help us protect the character of our—primarily our single-family neighborhoods and protect many of our neighborhoods that we've seen mansionization. And this will help keep those neighborhoods, keep their character as they have been for some time. I want to thank the Planning Department for their many years of work, and also thank Mr. Carras, Bonin, and Farrell and others, and Mr. Rue for helping give input to this very important item that is gears into work. The Planning Department also has an amending motion you would like us to make. Can you present that at the table, please?
Good morning. Tom Rothman from the Planning Department. I would like to make an amending motion on page eight of the ordinance before you in Section 6. The Planning Department requests that the text of the second unnumbered paragraph of 12.07.01(c5), which talks about the maximum residential floor area in the RE zone, be corrected as follows. And I'll read it right into the record. "For all other lots, the maximum residential floor area contained in all buildings and accessory buildings shall be as follows: colon, 'In the RE 9 and RE 11 zones, the maximum residential floor area shall be 40% of the lot area when the lot is less than 15,000 square feet. For lots 15,000 square feet or greater in the RE 9 and RE 11 zones, the maximum residential floor area shall be 35% of the lot area, or 6,000 square feet, whichever is greater. For lots in the RE 15, RE 20, and RE 40 zones, the maximum residential floor area shall be 35% of the lot area.'" The language in the draft ordinance was reworded from what appears on the current code to provide additional clarity, but inadvertently changed the intent of the provision. This correction provides the clarity needed while preserving the provision's intent.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is a technical amendment, correct? Doesn't change—
Correct.
—policy. So, I'd like to move that verbal request by the Planning Department, if I may, please.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, this—I think I want to—or I'm going to identify, call up Mr. Carras at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. And what began as an effort to protect the small neighborhood of Beverly Grove from out-of-scale boxy homes has grown into a citywide effort to adjust the very way we see our community, our neighborhoods, and our own homes. A problem that may have its roots on the west side of Los Angeles has grown throughout the city, affecting many of our districts. Two years ago, we as a council, overrun by real estate speculation and a lack of neighborhood integrity, put into place a two-year ICO, which is the maximum amount of time allowed by the state for interim control ordinances, to help reel in the damage being done during the next two years. Before us today is the culmination of work and countless hours spent by community activists, city staff, neighbors, and the Planning Department. And I'm very excited to see the final closure of those loopholes that allow the taking of our air and light, the gross out-of-scale development that was destroying our neighborhoods, and incentivize the epic destruction of our hillsides. Taking on this challenge hasn't been simple or expedient, but the groundswell of support from our constituents and the strong support from our city council has made what was once thought to be impossible or reachable reality. The previous baseline mansionization ordinance allowed for bonuses and exemptions that tipped the scale at nearly an 80% floor area ratio, encouraging the development of large boxy homes that towered over their neighbors. Both the new baseline mansionization ordinance and the R1 variation zones are huge improvements to what we previously had. None of them allow for the size and scale previously permitted by the old BMO. And in my district, I'm only supporting the more restrictive R1V2, BMO, and R1V3 zones. With the ICO set to expire in the next 23 days, our attention to this matter is paramount. I know full well there are folks frustrated with the amount of notice given as you've worked tirelessly to be engaged and improve your neighborhood. And I should say that I'm frustrated with the one-day notice as well. It could have been and should have been handled differently. But now we are where we are. We are all aware of the fact that the temporary ICOs will expire March 24th, and we can't miss that deadline. Delaying might allow a gap in time for— might allow a gap in time for speculators to take advantage of, and that is simply not acceptable. And for those who still have concerns, should we find that an area wound up too permissive or not flexible enough, corrections, if corrections need to be made to any particular neighborhood, we will address those swiftly. I'm going to ask for us to table the Cheviot Hills portion, item B, for further community feedback for a period of 30 days.
Item 27B.
Item 27B. These amendments will have an enormous positive impact to the quality of life for my residents and for the entire city of Los Angeles, and I want to thank the Planning Department for all of their hard work, because in the past two years we've created and applied unprecedented ICOs and protections. We've created better tailored zoning options for communities, and we've created hope for those today with all these new BMO and BHO ordinances, which have strong community support and input. I'm supporting the ordinances before us today and ask all my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Okay, we'll make your adjustment, Mr. Carrick, when we get to, I think now we're on 25, 26. When we get to 27, we'll incorporate your changes. So, we're going to reopen the hearing, Mr. City Attorney, 15, for 15 minutes, one minute each, starting off with Robin Greenberg, Ruth Schreiber. Please come forward. Please come forward. And then I'll be looking for Debbie. Debbie, I'm having a little difficulty with your last name. Linda Whiting, come forward. The more you get in line, the more speakers I'll get.
I have a CIS. Is it still one minute?
What neighborhood council?
I'm the president of the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council.
Okay, so, Sergeants, would you let, please let her come through and have a seat? And just read your statement.
My name is Robin Greenberg. I'm president of the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council. We want to thank Paul Carrick and his staff for all the support they have given us, as well as David Rue, as well as Tom Rothman and Kevin Keller. We appreciate the hours and hours and hours that have gone into this, and we do support the general recommendations of the BMO/BHO. We also feel that the hillside should not be overshadowed by the BMO, and that more time should be given to the hillside. We do believe that because of the extensive construction and grading throughout the hillsides, that there should be trip fees and verification of the hauling. It's felt that the departments need to be more coordinated to overlap the, to avoid the overlapping of projects in the same area. There should also be additional fees imposed upon export-import to pay for destruction of the infrastructure. Specifically, construction vehicles need to pay for street damage with a fee levied on each truck servicing the area. This is a used fee relevant to the damage and destruction of the roads by the trucks. There should also be a schedule of performance with construction bonds and appropriate completion bonding. The provision of maximum grading must be revised so that import and export of dirt are treated separately. They are commingled, and the result is damage and destruction to the neighborhoods and the roads and the transportation systems of the city. The cost is being pushed back on the people. The envelope height is resulting in unintended consequences contrary to the intent of protecting the safety of the Santa Monica Mountains. We object to certain exemption language for conditional uses that was slipped into the proposed ordinance after it was considered by the City Planning Commission was not part of the original intent of the motion nor part of the originally proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to explain, we have a community impact statement from the neighborhood council, and then they're asked to come to the center counter and given up to about five minutes to make their case. So if I could have the first person come up and identify themselves?
Hello, my name is Ruth Scribner. I'm a resident of Wilshire Vista neighborhood, council district 10, and I'm here to support item number 27 regarding the ReCode LA, the R1, R3, RG for our neighborhood. We've worked long and hard with the Planning Department, and we are very much in support of this item. I'd also like to support items number 25 and number 26, and regarding the BMO for the rest of Los Angeles, to please support the square footage of the attached garages. That is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I can get the next speaker, and I'm looking for, I think I see her, Shelley Carrick, and if you'd come up. No, you can go now.
Hi, Debbie Gawn. I live in Pickford Village, CD 10, and I also support the number 27, the new zone for Pickford Village, and I support 26, and on number 25, the BMO, just like to, this is about neighborhood integrity and character, and would please count the front attached garages as part of the square footage for the whole thing. Thank you.
Next.
Good morning.
Good morning. Linda Whiting, council district 10, Wilshire Vista. I support item number 27, the new zoning for Wilshire Vista. Support item number 25 with the inclusion of front-facing attached garages, and support item number 26. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. Hello there.
Thank you for calling me Shelley. I can be Shelley now instead of Rochelle Corretts. No relation, disclaimer again. Thank you all for all the time spent on this. Thank you to all of you. Thank you greatly to the Planning Department. I am in support of 25, 26, and 27. I am in CD 10 with our great Mr. Wesson.
Thank you.
I'm in Pickfair Village, and I'm thankful that hopefully this is the last time we meet on this. Thank you all.
Okay. So let me get Doug Carstens, Lori Arturo Martinez come forward. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Doug Carstens. I'm an attorney with Chatten Brown and Carstens, and here on behalf of the Sunset Coalition, Brentwood Residence Coalition, and Save Coldwater Canyon. We're here about item number 25. Now, this is a request that we have to eliminate section 13. It's a wonderful ordinance, all about improvements to the code, except for section 13. If section 13 is eliminated, we would support the passage of this ordinance. Section 13 is a major change to current policy as the code is written. We ask that if section 13 be stricken, the code would remain maintained as it is written, and we would support the passage of this ordinance. Otherwise, we do oppose it. We submitted a letter February 28th, 2017, which is in the record, and I refer to that and thank the council for its time. Thank you. Unless there's questions.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Sussman, and I'm a homeowner in Beverlywood. I'd like you to please consider maintaining the 200-feet-square garage exemption for the front-attached garage at a minimum for the BMO. We would prefer a 400-foot garage exemption for a front-attached garage. We live north of, in the Beverlywood North area, and support the R1V2 for our areas, but I would like to let you know, thank you for taking the time here, that I have already spent thousands of dollars on soil examinations, and the engineers have come, and we've paid architectural fees. The house is really not livable for a family of five in its current state, and if you decide to reduce the square footage in the neighborhood, it will continue to deteriorate as no one will find it cost-effective to rebuild a tiny house at the current building costs. I have intended to invest $1 million to improve the neighborhood.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker, and I'll be looking for, he spoke earlier. Robert, are you still here? And you, yeah, come on up, and if I can get Maxine Marks, Melissa Bloom. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Arturo Martinez. I live in CD 5. I do have a procedural question since it's three items I'd like to comment on. Do I get a minute per each of the items or just one minute for three items? And I'm happy to make my statements within the three minutes for all three.
It's two items. It's 25 and 26. I think there was a mistake on the board, and we'll take comments on 27 later.
Okay, so at this point, you have a minute on 25 and 26.
So it would be a total of two minutes, one minute for each?
When you come back, we'll, the city attorney is saying that we have to allow you to speak on 27 as well, so I think you want to take advantage of the minute that you have on 25 and 26 now. I'll sort this out, so you should begin.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesson.
Okay, wait, let me stop you again. I'm just, we do not have to take comments on 27, so this is your time. So go ahead.
And is it one minute for both items?
No, it's one minute, yeah, one minute for both.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Wesson. While I support the idea of curbing outscale buildings in residential neighborhoods, I do not support the manner in which the city has taken to implement the new BMO and R1 variations. Specifically, major problems include the lack of proper notice and appropriate outreach by the city, as well as the lack of input from all property owners who will be affected by any decision made by this esteemed city council. Rezoning affects property rights. Therefore, each and every property owner within the affected area should have been contacted directly by city and the Planning Department by mail, explaining what's going to be implemented. This did not happen. I'm unaware of any effort by the city to do so, other than their contact with a handful of community groups. To date, there are many individual homeowners in my neighborhood who remain completely unaware that this is happening. Indeed, I'm very active in my community, yet only became aware of this issue a week ago or so, only because of my general involvement in the community, and a neighbor actually informed me of it. The duty of outreach falls on the city, not neighborhood councils, HOAs, or other community groups. This is an issue that affects all individual property rights. Thus, a property owner should be, should have been notified and given the opportunity to speak to what should or should not happen to their property rights.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker? Robert, now you can go.
Okay, thank you. Robert, I is the Vice President of the Bray Hancock Homeowners Association. I think that there's been more than adequate public notice. This has been going on for a period of years now, and I wholeheartedly support the passage of the BMO, the amended BMO. We would like to see the garages, you know, counted fully, the square footage. Other than that, completely support the initiative and want to thank councilmembers Carrick and Rue for their wholehearted support of this process, and council for considering it and hopefully passing this all today, and also city planning for their wonderful work. It's, the city has responded to a grassroots movement. This was people, this was neighbors who wanted to have affordable housing and also not to have their, their privacy, you know, ruined by, you know, mansions, you know, many towering over their lots. So we appreciate all that, and also we support the single-family zones, which is number 27. We'd like to see that passed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If I could have next, if you could identify yourself and then wait a second. You are?
Melissa Bloom.
Hold on. So I'm looking for Nava Raziel, Maxine Marks, Marion Dodge, if you'd come up. Now, we're getting close on the limit. I want to get as many of you in in as 15 minutes as possible. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bloom. I live in Westwood Rancho Park area in Councilman Corretts's district. I respectfully request that the district, that my area be moved to R1V2 for Plumb vote on R1V2. I am a homeowner. I am not a developer, but I do want to protect my home value, and I believe that it is a reasonable compromise. It is not for mansions, McMansions. It is for reasonable expansion for homeowners and families that want to be able to build and have, and to have enough room for their families and to care for their elderly relatives, but not have McMansions. So I respectfully request that we enable R1V1 in our neighborhood, R1V2 in our neighborhood, and I ask that we be moved to Plumb. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker?
Hi, my name is Nava Raziel, and I am a homeowner in North Beverlywood, and I just want to say thank you. And we, I support R1V2 for my area, and I also request that the 200-square-foot garage exemption goes to pass at a minimum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'll be looking for Richard Blumenberg, Lauren Gans, Shelley Wagers, and Barry Johnson. So if you please get in line. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Marion Dodge, Chairman of the Hillside Federation. The intent of the BMO/BHO amendments was to close loopholes in the original ordinances. By and large, they've done a good job. Thank you, Councilmember Carrick and Rue, for these amendments. However, one area has opened up a new large loophole. New language exempts buildings operating under CUPs from the ordinance. These institutions are operating in residential areas and should comply with the ordinance. The Hillside Federation supports the other amendments to the BMO and BHO, but we urge you to eliminate section 13 on page 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, and I identify yourself, and I'm looking for Robert Schlesinger, Robert Silverman. Yes.
Lauren Gans. I live in North Beverlywood, and I just wanted to thank everyone today and to let you know that on behalf of 350 petition signers in my neighborhood, we support R1V2 for our neighborhood, which includes the BMO for front garage, which is a 200-foot square foot exemption, and we just want to make sure that 200-square-foot exemption for front garages remains part of what we get as R1V2 under the BMO, and so we hope that that will not change unless it, of course, gives us a further exemption, but we do not want to see that exemption limited anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Richard Blumenberg. I live in the Alphabet section of Pacific Palisades. Regarding the BMO and BHO, I think it was a mistake to eliminate the exemption for covered porches. I think it should have been allowing a covered porch just in the front, because that would make less boxy designs. Also, I'm opposed to the exemption of just 200 feet for a front-facing garage. I think it should be 400 square feet.
Yeah, next speaker, please.
Good morning. Shelley Wagers, CD 5. I want to offer deep thanks to councilmembers Carrick and Wesson and Rue, in particular, for their leadership, as well as the City Planning Department. The amendments to the BMO make major improvements, but they do leave one important loophole, which is failing to count the square footage of attached garages. These add hundreds of square feet to a house, and they should count as floor space. Garages attached at the front also do away with the buffer of a driveway between houses, and they disrupt the look and feel of many Los Angeles neighborhoods. No one is asking for a ban, but we want to count all the square footage of garages attached at the front. Also pleased to make sure that institutions located in residential neighborhoods are subject to the mansionization ordinance provisions without exception. Thank you again for
a good, good job. Thank you. And I think I can squeeze in Donald Lowes. Is it Donald? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Barry Johnson, Studio City. Thank you to councilmembers Carrick, Rue, and Wesson. The character of my immediate neighborhood has already been assassinated. It can never recover. Please do the morally right thing and make all 400 square feet of forward-facing attached garages count in the BMO ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Robert Schlesinger, Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council, Planning and Land Use Committee Chairman. I agree with Councilman Carrick, Rue, the entire Planning Department, Kevin Keller, Tom Rothman and their staff. This must go through before the ICO sunsets. However, I will depend on Councilman Carrick to immediately address some minor corrections that need to be done in the hillside ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Broide, if you could come on up, and Barbara, you here? Okay, yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, distinguished councilmembers. My name is Robert Silverman. I'm a resident in Lower CD 5, more specifically, Westwood South and Rancho Park area. I'm a constituent of Mr. I'm a constituent of Mr. Paul Coretz. Mr. Coretz, big supporter. Thank you so much. I'm calling, I'm just here today to express my disappointment, and there's been no outreach, Mr. President, in my community. Some neighborhoods have had great outreach. My community unfortunately has not. And I have been doing the outreach myself with a group of homeowners in my neighborhood, and I've been finding that 80 to 90 percent of the people that I speak to going door-to-door don't have any idea of what is happening with this BMO and the variation zones. The vast majority of people that I'm speaking to, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. President, and Mr. Coretz, are in favor of R1 V2 zoning for Westwood and Rancho Park. And we have been working with Mr. Coretz's staff, and we ask that we please have the opportunity to go to plum for a vote to get our voices heard like the other neighborhoods have done for the variation zones. Thank you so much. I appreciate your help on everything. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have our next speaker? Yes, sir? Identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Donald Lowes, Benedict Canyon and Bel Air Beverlycrest Neighborhood Council. I address four points relevant to the protection and integrity of the Hillside communities whose public safety is at risk. Consistent with the Planning Commission's insights of August 16, the maximum export and import provisions need to be made more restrictive than the maximum grading. We ask to require those metrics be reviewed by the department. Remedial grading must be ultimately subject to a review and a public hearing of the ZA by the planning department. No exception should be granted for the grading calculations of cut and fill for deepened foundation systems such as casings and piles. If it comes out of the ground, it should be counted. The provisions for calculating maximum envelope height must promptly be amended to resolve the unintended consequences that have waterfalling 90-foot buildings in the hills. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So please, if I can get you to come in, come on. You are the last speaker on this. The 15 minutes is over. Mr. President, there were nine people before you. I cut it out of 15 minutes. So sit down, and the floor is now yours, miss.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Barbara Broide, President of Westwood South of Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association, and I'm here to thank the entire council for having protected us over the past two years with the interim control ordinance. It's difficult as a volunteer in a homeowner association when residents and neighbors of yours come to you with tears in their eyes and say, "My house is ruined. I have no privacy. I can't see the light. What's going to happen to our neighborhood? I'm going to move." And there was nothing we could do until you enacted the ICOs. And now you've done a lot of hard work, and I want to thank the planning department and the staff and the council district offices for reaching out because unfortunately, it's a very complicated issue, and it's difficult to communicate it to the general public. And I know it's an emotional issue. Our councilman has proposed a compromise for our community. There are people who want R1 V2, and there are people who want R1 V3. And the BMO is the compromise position, and our homeowners association is grateful for that, and we support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment on this issue. Before I call on Mr. Coretz, Mr. Clerk, we should vote on Mr. Weezer's motion, the one I seconded. So if you want to run through that.
Yes, sir. The first vote should be on the Weezer-Weston amendment to amending motion 25A, 26A.
Okay, so let's, on that item, that amendment, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now where are we?
Mr. President, now the matter as amended as a whole is before you.
Okay, Mr. Coretz, do you want to speak on this or 27? So why don't you, we'll vote on these two. Let's, go ahead. Mr. Coretz, go ahead then.
Oh, thank you. I just want to point out on a couple of things that were mentioned. I don't think there's a lot of controversy over things that are being suggested by the Bel Air Beverlycrest community, so we'll continue to work with you to get those implemented. The issue of institutional and how we treat that use in residential areas, I don't think we can address that timely today, but I'll certainly take a look at that and work with the community and attempt to address concerns. I do also want to point out that none of this is set in stone. So as I mentioned before, if we've missed a community and if folks feel strongly that we've done something that's too strong or too weak, we have the ability to be flexible and come back and take a look. So with that, this is a very exciting time. It's taken us a number of years to work this out, but I believe we will be protecting the entire city from mansionization in the future, and I'm proud that we're taking this step.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, did you want to have a word?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, one more time, acknowledge the planning department for their work. When this got to plum, we had countless hours discussing these issues, but prior to that, they had countless hours in the community working with residents. And so I wanted to acknowledge the planning department, your hard work on this. It's not easy to get to this, and what you did for us is kind of, little by little, made us all understand what the issues are, but also refined this in such a way so that we maximize the intent of this ordinance. So thank you so much for your work, and also to Mr. Coretz and the other councilmembers who kept prodding us to do something about this, to protect the character of our neighborhood. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. So now we're voting on items 25, 26 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Coretz, on item 27, did you want to restate what you wanted to do on this item?
Yes, on 27B, I'd like to ask us to hold that item and bring it back in 30 days to give us time for additional community input.
So, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. 30 days brings us to April 4, sir.
Okay. So let's vote on this at 27 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming down.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over to next Wednesday, March 8, for a second consideration.
Okay, and that's why, because we didn't have 12?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that brings us where?
Mr.?
Where are we, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
And return to the regular, yes.
Very good, sir.
Okay, now we're back to our regular agenda. Where are we? We have some more general public comment. If we could...
Checking for you now, sir.
Mario Howard Vitkin, Nava Raziel, Maxine Marks. If I called your name, please come forward. Is Howard Vitkin here? If so, raise your hand. Mario? Raise your hand. Nava? Maxine Marks? If you're here, they are not here. They've been called. That concludes, Mr. City Attorney, general public comment. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and they are referred.
The desk is clear.
If we could get some quiet, shh, quiet in the chambers, I'd ask that all rise for adjourning motions. We're going into our adjourning motion. So I'm looking to my left side. Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have two quick adjourning motions. I'd like to ask the council to rise and honor, adjourn in memory of Ronald Kurt Granite passed away last week of heart failure of age 76, beloved husband of Deanna, Granite's father to Todd and Eric Granite, and grandfather to Zach Granite. He was a longtime Long Beach resident and respected real estate attorney, graduated from UCLA and Whittier Law School, married to his beloved wife Diana for over 52 years, was a father figure to more than his children. He was a guiding light and voice of optimism to so many in our community. Ron had an eloquence, enthusiasm, and calming presence appreciated with everyone who knew him. He will be dearly missed. May Ron rest in peace. And lastly, I'd like to adjourn colleagues in memory of Irene Anthony, passed away last month. Irene was a beloved mother and grandmother, was an example to her community, and a single mother of six, God rest her soul. She was an inspiration to her children, working hard in the celery fields across the country so her children can have a more prosperous future. She was constant source of help and support of her son Clarence Anthony, who currently serves as the CEO and Executive Director of the National League of Cities. Her son has established the Irene Anthony Scholarship Fund in her honor, which will allow students in Florida South Bay to attend to college. Our hearts go out to Irene's friends and family. Irene Anthony, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other adjourning motions to my left? Now I'm looking to my right. Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Donna Schoonover, the mother of SEIU Local 721, Bob Schoonover, who passed away on February 17. Donna was born in Pennsylvania, the youngest of 13 siblings, but she outlived all of them and passed away at the ripe age of 91, shortly after celebrating her 71st wedding anniversary with the love of her life, Robert Schoonover, Sr. She settled in Los Angeles in 1945, and they settled down in Eagle Rock and lived in the same home since 1963. Donna worked as a PBX operator at Pacific Bell, Security Pacific Bank, and Crocker Bank. She enjoyed gardening, traveling to Las Vegas and Laughlin, and especially experiencing new cuisines and new experiences with her husband, taking long walks with him. Just imagine, 71 years of marriage. What an incredible blessing. She was a loving mother to her two children, a doting grandmother to her three granddaughters and one great-granddaughter. She's survived by her husband, Robert Schoonover, Sr., her daughter Kathy Lee, her son, Robert Schoonover, Jr., her daughter-in-law Peggy, granddaughter Shannon Schoonover, granddaughter-in-law Tiffany, granddaughter Kelly Schoonover, granddaughter Dawn Sturgeon, and grandson-in-law Brandon, and her great-granddaughter Olivia Clemens. She will be greatly missed, and I know that all of us here extend our sincere condolences to Bob Schoonover, who we all work with very closely, as well as the rest of the family and Donna's many friends as well. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Are there any more adjourning motions to my right? Well, then, members, I would like to adjourn, and it is with extreme, extreme sadness, that we adjourn in the memory of Elias Rodriguez, who was the young boy, 14-years-old, where this body decided to put out a reward to see if we could find him. He went missing on February 17, and as we all remember, it was a day that the heavens opened, and it was one of the worst rainstorms that we've had in recent history in the city of Los Angeles. This young 14-year-old boy, nice kid, because of this rain, decided to take a shortcut, and he went across a wash, got caught up, and wound up in the LA River, carried for miles, where he eventually drowned. And that is a tragedy of tragedies. I do think that we need to view this as a teachable moment and urge parents and children alike to recognize that when you have a human being versus Mother Nature, the odds are generally in the favor of Mother Nature. And parents, you have to just instill and instill and instill this into the minds of your children. I know the water looks deceptive. It doesn't look that deep. Folks, this water was going in speeds over 70 miles an hour is what that has been predicted. And so we just really need to urge everybody to take a moment because these types of tragedies are avoidable. This family has been very resilient, and I'm proud of us for moving immediately to try to assist them. I want to give a special acknowledgement to David Ryu's office and Sarah for bringing this to the attention of my office. I want to also say that Ms. Martinez has been very unbelievably supportive during this process. I would think Ms. Martinez probably took that shortcut across that wash, but we just want to let the family know that our hearts are with them, and I believe it was a family member during a search that actually located the young man. So on this adjourning motion, I want to say to the clerk's office, I want it to be a three-signature. We want all members, but I want it to be a three-signature where it is signed by myself, Ms. Martinez, and Mr. Ryu. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say a few words. Although we hope for a different outcome, I want to commend the city family for putting together the men and women who helped search for Eli and the hundreds of community members that came out throughout the San Fernando Valley, particularly the Northeast Valley, to search for this little boy. I often talk about what a special place the valley is, but these particular situations is what amazes me the most. There was literally hundreds, if not thousands, of people searching every single day for Eli, and I cannot even imagine what his mother is going through right now. So I just want to say thank you to the men and women who searched for Eli and the countless of community members that turned out not only to volunteer, that walked the streets and the neighborhoods, but they did everything on social media, they delivered food, they did everything they could to try to bring some sort of closure to this horrible, horrible tragedy. And the last thing I want to say is, I saw on the news last night, there was going to be a community vigil at Caesar Chavez Academy, which is where the school he went to, this Friday evening. I don't have the exact time, but again, this is another example of what an incredible community we are in the valley, and hundreds of people are expected to be there, not only to show support for the family, but to remember this incredible little boy. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Ryu?
I just want to thank you, Council President. It was first brought to my attention because one of my close friends and former staffer to Supervisor Gloria Molina, Angie Castro's sister's friend was the mother. And they reached out, and as soon as we found out, and you know, I think in a matter of like 30 minutes, we were able to turn it around to make sure that we participated in the search. And I think, I know the mother was very appreciative that we brought so much more attention to it, and I know the FBI jumped in afterwards. And, you know, these storms, it was, you know, we had great response from our city family. Unfortunately, he was found about 12 miles away from where he was, where they believe he first tried to cross, and he was found in my district, in Los Feliz, part of the LA River. And this storm, you know... And this storm, you know, we should remember those because we live in sunny California, and we don't often think about it, and when it rains a little bit, we're kind of shocked, and we don't know what to do, and it was a big rain, and you know, it wasn't just this young man who lost his life, but we also had another person who lost, who lost his life in my district, in this part in the valley as well, in Sherman Oaks, where, where the high winds had a tree take down a power pole and fall on a car, and someone who was walking nearby touched a car that was electrified and was electrocuted and died as well. So, we had two fatalities, the storm. Look, that's two too many, but we have to be safe, you know, whether it's running water, whether it's down power lines, whether it's a mudslide. It might look safe, but it's not. So, I join, thank you, Council President, thank you, Nury. I mean, the tremendous response from the valley was amazing, but unfortunately, we had some tragedies this winter.
Thank you, Mr. Rue and Ms. Martinez, and I think what we'll do, and I'm going to get you guys to sign it with me, maybe we'll introduce a motion requesting some kind of review of these areas. There may be some additional things that we as a city can do to upgrade the safety, so I'll be working on that and, and try to get that in by Friday. Okay, so, with that said, any other adjourning motions? Then, we are adjourned.